For meeting of the Warren County Commissioners, Jerry Bell presiding. Please keep all cell phones off or on vibrate. Please remain standing for prayer and the pledge of the flag.
I call the meeting of the Warren County Commission to order. At this time, I'll hand over Mr. Christie Ross for our advocacy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would like to ask former Minister and our current opioid abatement counselor, Rick Ettrick Ford, to come forward and lead us in the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for life, and we thank you so much for this time for us to come together as your people to handle business for Warren County. We pray that as we continue to do these things, that we'll always do things decently and in order, and we pray for all those that are in rule and in control. Pray that all decisions will be guided by your love and that we'll always seek to do the best for each other, no matter what. And it's those things we ask Heavenly Father that we always keep in mind. Please be with all of our families, be with Warren County, and it's in your son Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I'll now hand over to Mr. Ross Lee for our pledge of allegiance.
Salute please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now ask Clerk Call Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Here.
Carl Woben?
Here.
Holly Wilton? Charles Dodson?
Here.
Randy England?
Here.
Steve Williams?
Here.
Stephen Hilton?
Here.
Brad Hillis?
Here.
James Hines?
Here.
Scott Kelly?
Here.
Ron Lee?
Here.
Gary Martin?
Here.
Ken Martin?
Here.
Kenny Moffitt?
Here.
Alan McDonan? Gary Frager?
Here.
Chris Reedy? Christie Ross?
Here.
Scott Ridley?
Here.
Tommy Savage?
Here.
Donna Smith?
Here.
Dylan Stow?
Here.
Cole Taylor?
Here.
Wayne Wilton?
We have twenty-one present tonight. We move on to item number five, adoption of our docket. Motion to approve the docket is presented. We got motion by Mr. Bell and a second by Mr. Prater. Any additions to our docket tonight? Being none, all those in favor of approving our docket for tonight, say aye. All opposed, passage unanimously. We have now approved our docket for tonight. Any public wishing to speak on any subject matter that is on the agenda will be allowed to speak. We'll sign up with Mr. Hillis at this time, and you will give him three minutes if you wish to speak. It'll have to be something that's on the agenda we approve tonight. We'll move on to item number six while Mr. Hillis has signed the people up for the review of our minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we accept the minutes as written and suspend the reading of those minutes.
All right, you got a motion by Mr. Savage and a second by Mr. England. Any additions or corrections to the minutes that need to be made? If not, all those in favor of approval, say aye. All opposed, passage unanimously. We'll move into our elected official reports. First on the list is out on patrol, Mr. Jeff Tubby.
Good evening, Commissioners. Has anybody got any questions about this quarterly report submitted today?
Mr. Chairman, I was telling Mr. Jeff earlier that I love his report. Thank you, I'll pass that on. Very good report, thank you.
Got a motion by Mr. Halpern. I hear a second. A second by Mr. Savage. Any questions about the report? All those in favor of approving the report, say aye. All opposed, passage unanimously. Jeff, have you got something you need to...
Yes, I've got one more thing. On October seventh, twenty twenty-five, a donation was made to Warren County Animal Control and Adoption Center in the amount of fourteen hundred and thirty dollars. The donation was made in memory of Mr. James Caldwell, a Warren County resident who unexpectedly passed away on August the tenth, twenty twenty-five, and this donation was made by his two lovely living daughters, Tori Walker and Taylor Wanamaker. I personally want to thank these ladies for this general donation they made in memory of their father.
We'd like to thank them if you would, please join me in just a moment of silence. Thank you, Mr. Jeff. We'll now move on to Health Department Report. Senator Fox.
Good evening, you guys should have my report. Have you got any questions?
Got a motion by Mr. Stow and a second by Mr. Glenn. Any questions about the Health Department Report? Being none, questions? All those in favor of approving the report, say aye. All opposed, passage unanimously. And Ms. Fox, our new Health Department is coming along really good.
It is, it's going great. You haven't seen it, you need to go look at it, it's awesome. We're so excited. And we have five flu tomorrow, drive-through at our Health Department, three flu shots all day, nine to six. Anybody want to come?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, IDB Director. Ladies and gentlemen.
Evening, Commissioners. You should all have my quarterly report. Two things I would like to note. One was not on there, but today was our Industry Appreciation Day Golf Tournament, a networking tournament with a great success. We had many, many industries represented there today. But also, on such a recent day, we did have an announcement. I believe you should have all received inbox that day. So if you didn't, please let us know so we can update your email addresses. But we had an announcement, there was eight point three million for fifty-eight jobs for D-FAB, which is the new owner of Polyplex. And so they had actually moved inside of the food limits to the old Aqua Tech building. And they are still maintaining their lease on the Carrier Park for another project in the future, but I'm not sure everybody was aware of their extension project.
Motion to approve. Got a motion by Carl, a second by Mr. Smith. Any questions about the IDB report? Being none, all those in favor of approving the report, say aye. All opposed, passage unanimously. We'll move on to the Planning Commission Report, Mr. Ron Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Y'all have a copy of our Planning Commission for the third quarter report. If there's any questions, Commissioner Glenn and I will do our best to answer.
Motion to approve. Got a motion by Mr. Prater and a second by Mr. Moffitt. Any questions about the Planning Commission Report? Being none, all those in favor of approving the report, say aye. All opposed, passage unanimously. We'll move on to item number five, Judicial Commissioners, Mr. David Weavers.
Members of the court, you have my quarterly report. Be glad to answer any questions if there's any.
Got a motion by Mr. Eric Halpern and a second by Mr. Hillis. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Weavers? Being none, all those in favor of approving the report, say aye. All opposed, passage unanimously. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number seven, the Financial Report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the court, you have my report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer at this time. Got a motion in favor, a second by Mr. Ruble. Any questions about the Financial Report here tonight? Being none, all those in favor of approving the report, say aye. All opposed, passage unanimously. We'll move into item number eight, our Committee Reports. We'll start out with budget finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
All right, Building Grounds?
Building Grounds, the parking lot is about halfway finished, and we hope to have it done in the next week or so. The strip is done, the asphalt's laid. The city's going to do the sidewalk either this week or next week. So Josh and his crew is moving right along with it. That's all I have to report just now.
And y'all need to thank Josh for the job he's done. He's doing a really good job out there. Economic and agriculture?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have is the airport has one more third Saturday flying mail. This last week, there were quite a few people out there. They have one more the third Saturday of November, and that'd be the last one this time. And we have two appointments for the IDB Board tonight, and the other night, we have nothing to report.
All right, Education?
The Education Committee has nothing to report at this time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stow. Financial Management at this time has nothing to report. Health and Welfare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't able to make the meeting this month due to a business trip, but I did appreciate Commissioner Stow filling in for me there. Just, I want everybody to look at the report and notice that we're still taking the, basically what we're adopting now. And, but we are seeing quite a bit of donations, and that's good. So just, just be focused on what we can do to be proactive. And then we've got thirty-one animals that's been in there over a hundred days.
Highway Bridge, Mr. Prater?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Policy Personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Policy Personnel met on October second, and we accepted reports from our Judicial Commissioner and our Coast Department. Our next meeting will be November sixth. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Safety, Mr. Ron Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Safety is in our report at this time.
County Correctional Partnership, Mr. England?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, in our total of our inmates today, the population of the jail is two hundred and thirty-nine, a hundred and eighty-nine males, fifty females, and ten TDOC. I spoke with Ms. Martini this afternoon, and things are going pretty good out there. We had a few little hiccups, but we've got through them, and we're concentrating now on hopefully getting started, getting some things going our way for our automotive class. You know, we'd like to see that at least get started or in the process of building by the end of the year. So there we go, we can get that started.
All right, Legislative, Ms. Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
All right, we move on to item number nine. Is any public comment, Mr. Weavers? I'm going to take this public comment, and we're going to move it now if it pertains to one of the items that's on the agenda. But I want them to speak, they're actually, she didn't have to sign a productive order, they called my guy. All right, we'll move on to item number one. Reappointment of the nine-one-one board. You have them repackaged. Presently, the plant, Keesey, Jeff Carter, and Gary George's terms are up, and I recommend that they be reappointed for the nine-one-one board. Got a motion by Mr. Ruble and a second by Mr. Halpern. Any discussion? All those in favor of reappointment, say aye. All opposed, passage unanimously. We'll move on to item number two. Reappoint, reappoint the Industrial Development Board, Mr. Carl Holden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Economic High Culture Committee unanimously has two nominations to replace people that are leaving the IDB Board. Their terms have expired. We have nominated Jeff Lee and Glenn Taylor, and I make a motion.
All right, I hear a second. Got a second by Mr. Stow. Any discussion about these appointments? Being none, all those in favor of approving appointments, say aye. All opposed, passage unanimously. We'll move on to item number three, which is a resolution to come to the Highway Bridge.
Mr. Chairman, we met the other day in our Highway Bridge meeting, and we had some residents come and wanted to talk to us about the Roy Foster Road. And as you know, none of our county roads, if they're not marked, then it's presumed to be gulfie five mile an hour down county roads. And with the things that are going on out there, some of the residents come forward and felt like that we needed to slow it down. And after much discussion, our committee voted that we make that road, on the Roy Foster Road, thirty miles an hour all the way through, and I so moved that for a motion.
Got a motion and a second by Mr. Bell. Any discussion on this? While we're on that topic, the public can go and request a public hearing to be held on the Rock where ATD Act. So everybody out there needs to go to the website and actually request if that be done. So we'll have a public hearing on the query that'll be going on the Roy Foster Road. Any more questions? All right, we'll ask Clerk Call Rupp then.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Woben?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Williams?
Here.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ridley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Dylan Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Wilton?
Yes.
Do you want to change your vote?
The resolution passes twenty-one to zero. We'll move on to item number five, which is a courthouse grant revolution, eighteen twenty twenty-five. Number four, I skipped the numbers there. It's number four. The reason you've got this on your desk is we've got an email saying that there was four billion dollars of state money going to be allotted to all the historical courthouses in the state of Tennessee. Well, we've checked into it, Mr. Hillis did, and Warren County's courthouse is not on the historical society's historical buildings. But here a week ago, Mr. Ryan Moore went to our judge, went to a conference. And when he was at that conference, he's explaining about this grant, and there's another way that you can qualify it, is that if your courthouse is on a Main Street, Certified Main Street Association, you qualify for the grant. So we've been rushing around trying to get this in place so we could fill out for grant. This grant here will require a five percent match. We're looking to try to do the windows up top that we, we're looking, that's got some bleak issues and some rotten under the bottom of them, and the forward fascia boards on the outside. We had somebody, Ryan Moore got somebody this morning, I met with him up there to get estimates, so I don't know exactly what the cost is. There's been a lot of talk about some of the grants we're getting. This one here will require taxpayer money to match this one. Now, the next one will be hundred percent grant, and it will be funded totally by the state. But that's the reason this is on your docket. I have to have this in by November the seventh, and I have to have approval from this county court committing ten thousand dollars if we apply for up to the two hundred thousand. Not guaranteed to get anything, but if we can, that'll just fix our court, beautify our courthouse, is all it'll do. Got a motion by Mr. Halpern and a second by Mr. Moffitt. Any questions about this grant? All that's clerk, Call Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Woben?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Williams?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Gary Frager?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ridley?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Dylan Stow?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Wilton?
Yes.
Do you want to change your vote?
Item number four passes twenty-one to zero. We'll move on to item number five, which is the three-star grant, GFY twenty-five twenty-six dash twelve. This is a grant, this is actually the budget number four grant. I have not signed the grant contract yet. You have the opportunity to take it or not take it. This grant is for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with no match. Straight money to the county that we will not be spending. We're looking to quickly take this money to the mall. Where the senior center went in, there's approximately thirty-five hundred square foot that is unusable. If we actually rent that out to anybody, I will have to come back and I will have to ask this court for money to remodel, or we'll have to give them three or four years to fix this place back up because the electric's going to be separated, the tiles is going to have new flooring put in, a new ceiling put in, new HVAC system, all that's got to be put in, in that space. So we were able to fill out the three-star grant and get a no match, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to renovate this, put in a, if we call it a coffee shop, it's more like a community hub, is what you probably need to call it more than a coffee shop. It's going to have some Danish's, and we're looking to let some special needs people and some seniors work to help run this for our mall and make this place. So now, I'm going to ask Holly McBride, if she'll come forward and she can speak, don't let she not speak.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for letting me come and speak today. I'm Holly McBride, I'm with McManville Special Gains, if you're not familiar with me. I am absolutely in favor of taking this grant. Not only is it a non-matching grant, which means you're not going to be out anything, it is absolutely wonderful for our special needs community. Special Gains, our organization has tried to do employment programs before and failed. And it is because the employers here in McManville, Warren County are scared, understandably. It's new, it is not, it's not known, you know, there's special liabilities that come with that. come with that. And, but I'm not going to give up. We are going to keep trying. And this would make it phenomenal because the community, all of these employers, all of these business owners could see that these special needs guys and gals, they have talent. They have the ability to learn. They have skills that, that they can show, that they can put back into the community, and they want to be a part of this community. They want to give back. They want to help. And this would give them the opportunity to show the rest of the public that they can do that, not just in this community hub, that, that they could be integrated with the rest of, the rest of Warren County and, and be the wonderful citizens that I know that they can be. Anybody have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Holly?
Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. I'll open the floor up for, uh, motion. Got a motion. And a second by Mr. Ruble. Any questions? Anybody got any questions? Being none, I'll ask clerk Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Baldwin?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy Ewing?
Yes.
Steve Flynn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wilcher?
Yes.
Do you want to change your vote?
The three-star grant passes twenty-one to zero. We'll move on to item number six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is to appropriate, uh, two grants for the school system, uh, the PDA learning equipment, uh, environment equipment grant, uh, for two different schools, ten thousand a piece, and then the rural, uh, rural healthcare resiliency program grant for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Motion approved. Second. Mr. Prater, over here, sit down. Mr. Staff, one second. Mr. Prater. All right. Any questions about this, about the amendment? Being none, I'll ask clerk Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Baldwin?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy Ewing?
Yes.
Steve Flynn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wilcher?
Yes.
Do you want to change your vote?
Twenty-one to zero. Number six passes number seven. Clark?
Uh, this is EP five, uh, for the, this is for the York School to establish line items associated with the public state, public security grant, uh, that can be used to enable cameras and technology for the school system.
We got a motion by Commissioner Ruble. Second by Mr. Savage. Any questions about this amendment? There's no questions. I'll ask clerk Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Baldwin?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy Ewing?
Yes.
Steve Flynn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wilcher?
Yes.
Do you want to change your vote?
Item number seven passes twenty-one to zero. We'll move on to budget member number eight. I'll bet Mr. Clark a little. This is a budget amendment for our juvenile services. We have a individual that's, uh, under the age of eighteen that wearing the contract out to stay at a, uh, at another facility because he is not able to stay at a facility that we usually contract with.
Yes, and he'll be in detention for, until at least sometime in February.
So that's the reason this budget amendment, to get enough money together to cover that one individual. Mr. Chairman, we don't have any control over that. We have to... No, this is a court ordered thing, so there's no control over it. Did I hear a motion? We approve it. Motion. Motion, Mr. Baldwin. Second by Mr. Todd. Any questions about this amendment? Being none, I'll ask clerk Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Baldwin?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy Ewing?
Yes.
Steve Flynn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wilcher?
Yes.
Do you want to change your vote?
All right. Item number eight passes twenty-one to zero. Item number nine, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is amendment for both the general fund and debt service funds. Um, in reviewing our, um, local private act that established our hotel motel tax, um, was issued in, I think, ninety-one. Um, but it, initially it came up, we were looking into it, and it actually says that the hotel motel tax should be deposited in the general fund. Um, for as long as I can remember, we've been putting it in debt service. Um, but since our private act since it's been going to the general fund, this is an amendment to move that budget out of, that budget revenue out of debt service and into, uh, the general fund.
Motion to approve. Got a motion, Mr. Ruble?
Second.
Second by Mr. Haltman. Any questions about the, uh, about the budget amendment? Being none, I'll ask clerk Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Baldwin?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy Ewing?
Yes.
Steve Flynn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Chris Reapy? I'm sorry. Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wilcher?
Yes.
Do you want to change your vote?
Item number nine passes twenty-one to zero. Budget amendment number, uh, H W F Y twenty-five twenty-six-two. Uh, Mr. Belling is needing to buy some, uh, concrete tiles, and that was not in his budget, so we moved a budget amendment and budget finance, financial management before this previous meeting, so we can go ahead and get some roads fixed that he needs his concrete top. So... Got a motion by Mr. Savage. Second by Mr. Haltman. Any discussion? If you have none, I'll ask clerk Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Baldwin?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy Ewing?
Yes.
Steve Flynn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Gillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Lane Wilcher?
Yes.
Do you want to change your vote?
Item number ten passes twenty-one to zero. We'll hold approval of the notice.
This is a list for the notice. Krista Flynn, Heidi Hassel, Ethan Hawkins, Jason B. Scott, Alex Duner, Diane Solis, Jennifer M. Guy, and Latisha Watson.
Motion to approve. Motion by Mr. St- uh, St. Spout. And a second by Mr. Moffitt to approve the notice. All those in favor of approving the notice, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passage unanimously. We'll move on down to announcements. Uh, I have reappointed Jenna Raymond to the High Canyon Railroad Authority. That needs to be spread on the minutes. And we have, uh, two people who said they are running, Mr. Cheryl isn't represented, but Mr. Howard's running for that position. And I will be letting anybody else that comes out and says they are running those positions have two minutes to introduce themselves. So we'll start with Mr. Paul Cheryl.
Well, thank you, Executive Terry Bell, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the opportunity to be here tonight with this opportunity to say a few words. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to, uh, try to represent Warren County and White County in the forty-third district in the great state of Tennessee. I try my best to, when I go to Nashville, I try my best to either reach out to Executive Terry Bell or, uh, anyone else that would like to have an input on how I vote in Nashville to represent you. And, uh, I'm open, my office is open to anybody who wants to call and, uh, share with your ideal on different things. I know there's some, uh, pretty hot issues going on in Warren County right now, and, and I know several have reached out to me and I've tried to reach out to different people, but, uh, I think it's a very situation what's going on, and we want to try to, um, try to say who would be the best for your next, uh, DA in Warren County, which represents Banbury County too. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to be elected in the forty-third district, uh, everyone who may have here, be here, that has voted for me. And maybe someone's listening, I want to thank them too. And, and I just want to be open to you. If I can help you any way, feel free to give me a call. And thank you for the opportunity. If you have any questions or comments, I'll be here, and I'll be here after the meeting or whatever you'd like to do.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Cheryl. We appreciate you coming. And Mr. Dwayne Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Uh, thank you for my two minutes. I'd like to speak to you from my part. My name is Dwayne Howard, and I am running for the Tennessee House of Representatives, forty-third district of Warren, White County, August sixth, twenty twenty-six. I've been asked why I'm running, and simply to state it, I love Warren, White County, and I want the best for us. I came tonight so you can put a face that was going to be representing the name Dwayne Howard, to confirm with you that I am approachable, that I desire to work with you and help you. I will be the representative that establishes town hall meetings to stay close to our citizens. I have established a political career into representing the people over politics, communities and their special issues for the benefit of the county as a whole. At the end of the day, everyone should understand that the job well done for all, all our citizens collectively is what matters. My resume reads like this: I'm a fourth generation White County farmer from both sides of my family. Graduated White County High School, Tennessee Technical University, retired U.S. Postal Service after thirty years, married to my soulmate for thirty-six years with three great children. Fifteen years as an elected official, serving on either a farm bureau, school board, county commissioner, serving multiple roles as chairman, vice chair, secretary, parliamentarian, Tennessee legislative news. I've learned in much in every one of these roles, and experience is unmeasurable. My goal is simple: take my wisdom and knowledge to the next level to the Tennessee House of Representatives and be a servant for you, for your goals, your desires, work for you. I do ask for your personal support on August the sixth. Lastly, whether your lineage is similar to mine, or you recently moved into Warren, White County, we chose to live here, work here, farm here, and raise our families here. I, like you, want the best for Warren, White County. I pledge to you that I'll always be the best representative and neighbor you can trust. Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Likewise. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you for this time.
Anybody else have any announcements for this county court? Got a motion, Mr. Haltman. I hear a second. Got a second, Mr. Cole Taylor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, Mr. Haltman.